So, let's call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. The Woodbury Select Board. And the first item is to discuss whether there are any adjustments to the agenda.
I have a small one. The, at 7:20 PM, we have an executive session during which we could discuss the bids for completion of the town's local hazardous mitigation plan with Norman. Norman's subcommittee has reviewed the three bids and...
Four bids.
Four bids and made a recommend- have a recommendation, but... So, we don't have to do it in executive session unless you want to go through all the... What am I trying to say? The...
The different bids?
No, the recommendations from different clients or things like that. What do you call that?
References?
Yeah, references. Thank you. References are supposed to be confidential.
Are we getting a recommendation from the committee?
Yes.
And they've already done that?
Yeah.
They have.
So, I would, I'd be fine with going on their recommendations.
So, when, okay, so when we get to that point, we don't have to know. Yeah.
Yeah.
But Norman will be here, so...
Okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda? All right. The next is to discuss the minutes from the April 29 meeting. Is there a motion from a member of this board?
I think I left this, I left them over here somewhere.
There they are.
There they are. Okay.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve that.
I did have to make a couple of little changes because I got some numbers wrong into the FEMA report.
These are, but these are amended?
Amended from the...
From, you said you had to make a few changes?
Yeah, I made a couple of corrections here from...
But this is the correct one, is the word?
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not the same as, exactly same as the draft, but...
Well, we're small boys, so we don't need a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes as written from April 29, 2024? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right, they are approved. Have signed. Diana? And...
Robin?
Public comment.
Huh.
We don't really have anybody in the public section. I don't know if you gentlemen have anything else other than your business here that you want to comment on publicly?
Anything not on the agenda?
I do.
All right, now's your moment.
Yeah, let's hear it.
So, I saw a lot of email chatter regarding the bicycle signs on our gravel roads. And I'm just wondering why all the chatter on email? Since it was already approved, how many years ago Michael? Four years ago?
Three or four years.
Yeah. The roads haven't changed. The need has probably increased. So, I'm just wondering why the chatter on email?
It came up a year or so ago. And I think it was Lizzy that had some concerns about them. You know, I had questions about the wording. I think you had some concerns about the placement and things like that.
Of the signs and then I also just, you know, had the thought that if we, which it turns out we don't, but that if we had had some random signs that would fit the purpose of warning people that weren't exactly the same, that maybe we could save the cost. We don't have any signs kicking around, so that's no point, but...
I think I've sent an email too with the cost that we were able to quantify like four years ago or something like that.
Michael sent us all, but you, Michael Sandler sent us the whole report.
I could deluge you guys with more if you want.
I think he also sent us another report that I might not have opened yet. He said he could not make it to the meeting today, so we'll do it next week, two weeks from now.
I, and I would say from my perspective, like it did read, the signs did read like cyclists may use the full road, encouraging cyclists to be out in the middle of the road is how it felt like it read.
That's kind of how it felt to me too.
I don't, I don't have a strong opinion about it. If that seems clear to everybody else, then I think...
I couldn't tell a lane when it says entire lane, does it mean the right lane or the left lane? Or does it mean the traveled lane? That's what I thought was confusing because it shouldn't be, we shouldn't be encouraging cyclists to ride in the middle of the road. I mean, they can, most of them, it's fine.
I did have, I did have a conversation with Michael. You know, I was out working in the garden and he and Natalia were walking by. And we did talk about the wording on the signs and did kind of come up with some variations that might be less vague to, you know, more specific. And I think, you know, he, I think he can come to the next meeting. I think it would be good for him to, you know, because I think maybe the wording would be helpful. And as a person who rides a bicycle on the roads, the safest place to be on a bicycle is sort of in the middle. The shoulders are pretty treacherous on a bicycle because they're soft and rocky, so...
And you can hear cars coming.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're down on a motorbike.
Yeah, I usually get on the side of the road that the car is not approaching from. So, sometimes it's the wrong side, but I'm giving them plenty of room.
So, anyways, the fact that whether or not it was approved by a previous board, I don't know. We have another project up the road here that was approved by a previous board. And now it looks like that's going to not be as easy as it was. One board, previous board was convinced that you could take out that curb up by, well, I still call it Winston's Hill, without any additional cost to the town. And it was approved at that point, and then we realized that that wasn't correct. So...
Different kind of project that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, definitely. But in fact, the fact that it was approved by a previous board.
I get that, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Robin, when you like the...
My first thing is, I know I've sent this around to everybody, but it's about the fire alarm system that he...
Oh, yeah, right.
About how it wasn't working?
Right.
Yeah.
You were going to follow up with him?
I did. So, I sent an email out to Rusty and then I also sent, like same email, I sent it to Rusty and I can't think of his name, but the guy who's the...
Dave Rochambeau?
Yeah, I think so. He's for OSSU. He's like building person.
Like he's the new Larry.
Yes. So, I sent it to both of them and I do not believe I ever heard back. So, I can follow up on that and I will.
What letter did you get? You sent something around, you said?
Yeah, I sent it around on May 2nd.
Oh.
That I was getting a call from Dave Rochambeau.
Oh, okay.
That the, and I understand that the library is concerned that their portion isn't up and going either.
But there was part of this whole thing that we paid for?
That's the way we understand it.
Yeah, the system is for the whole building.
And...
So, you're going to follow up on that?
I'll re- first I'll double check and make sure that they didn't respond and I didn't dismiss it. But I'm pretty sure I didn't hear back.
Okay, and we have had a concern from a property owner in Woodbury about the high water issue due to the beavers down through here on Room 14. He says that it is damaging his property. Who's it from? Chris Wright?
Which, is it the, in, in South Woodbury?
No, 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 this one right here. He owns Shatney's old garage.
Oh, okay. I will check that out. I wasn't aware that there were beaver damming up that. I mean, they have in the past.
Yeah. Do you want me to forward you the email that I got from?
Sure, all responsible persons.
Because it's from him corresponding back and forth with a Tyler Brown?
Yeah, Tyler Brown is a fish and wildlife beaver person.
Okay.
Did somebody buy the apartment house?
Yes.
Oh, so Chris doesn't own that?
He does not own that anymore. And he has a new nice front porch on it.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is it looks like there could be some more funding that we could apply for. And it says it didn't have to be anything that was damaged by the flood of July 23. It will be funding that can help so it doesn't flood.
I would be curious about that, just for the project with the brook here in the village.
Okay. Yeah, I can send you guys the email that I received. And then the other thing I have is I would like to thank all of the, I believe gentlemen, it could have been ladies involved, but for getting the speed signs up and working. Thank you. The one by Blake Hill right over here and then the one down by Woodbury Lake.
What happened?
For Berkin?
Yeah.
That's great. We'll say, were you doing that this morning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We were putting one of them back up when he went by.
Yeah. Oh, good.
They were easily fixed.
The new one or the...
Uh, we put the new one up where it was meant to, the by Woodbury Lake. And then we kind of made, took parts out of others to make them all work.
Oh.
So, they're all in place and they're all working properly.
Oh, wow.
There's one that needs to be, the new one needs to be, needs to be reset. Because it was set for 35 miles an hour and that's a 40 speed limit through there. So, that's just a matter of programming it and Skip says that's a piece of cake.
Yeah, thanks, Bert. You did all the tinkering, right, to make them work?
Well, I programmed them, but tinkering taking them apart? No, the road crew did that.
Oh, okay. Well, thanks. All the guys.
Nice.
Basically plug and play. If you see a damaged component, just take one out and snap it in.
Yeah, they're pretty, they're pretty simple.
So, does that mean we're down, are we down one because you were taking damaged components from it? We're not missing one?
We've got one that we can still take parts from.
Okay.
Because we replaced one through FEMA, the one by, by Woodbury Lake. So, we put that one new up. That one, incidentally, still works.
Okay.
So... Well, the one that was, was damaged in the flood still work?
Yes.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
So, you can use that for parts or...
We just charged the battery and it went to working, so...
Don't help FEMA.
We used that one down on the north side by the town line, or south side by the town line. And then we used parts for the one on Blake Hill though.
Right.
So, there, everything is up and running and until the next incident, I suppose.
Until they're not.
Until they're not, right.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Robin, for recognizing that.
Yeah. And you saved us $10,000.
We did, yes, yes.
So, Robin, must you have anything else? We can roll right into the road commission.
Yeah, you can roll right in.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, yeah, it's the road report section, yeah.
Yeah, you guys did get reports from Brandy this week. Where's it been? I wasn't sure where you were sitting.
I never know.
Uh, so, road per report.
June of 21. Michael?
Pretty stagnant. We've been grading every chance we can in between raindrops. We're almost around once. We've got a couple of the small roads still left to do. I was going to talk about the speed carts, but we've already covered that, or the speed signs. We are on, starting this week, we're doing the four 10-hour days. So, we won't be working Friday unless there's a incident. And then feel free to call and we'll, we'll take care of. Yeah, I was, I just remember about the sand, the winter sand, I remember at a meeting that was mentioned that we were out of our contract or that we would have to put it back out the bid. But it turns out, I guess you did some research and some of them are all set for another year.
Yeah, I went to, over to gravel construction and said, it looks like we're still good. And he said, yeah. And I can understand why if he said at one point that he didn't wish he didn't do a three-year contract, it's probably because of price.
The price, right. That's right. Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah.
He probably won't do a three-year, you know, that far out again, right? But he does have to honor the contract. And the contract price, so...
You have a company?
But I see where it said, it said it's available in August, so does that mean we can't start hauling until August?
Unless they change it now. If they're ready and they want you to send it, that means they want you to haul it.
Was that, was that in the contract?
Yeah, it is.
It is, okay.
What you're saying, contractor should provide 10,000 cubic yards between August 8, 2022 and June 30, 2025. Somewhere here it said that.
Yeah, I remember seeing it.
Is that a problem?
Product availability pickup at the pit available by August 6, 2022, August 12, 2023, and August 10, 2024.
Okay.
Do you have this whole thing going?
I don't, but yeah, that'd be good. Yeah, it's not really a problem. It's just, it's just something that we could fill in, you know, with time throughout the summer.
Yeah.
So, I'll just ask him to see if he's, if he's got some that's available and we can haul it particular days where we can't be outside or we can't do nothing else.
The, there's also something on there where they give us a discount of week pay in advance. So, we should discuss that before July 1st and see what Brandy thinks about that. I think she did, I don't know if you pay the whole year or half year. But first, the whole...
As I remember, last year was she did half and half. Like we'd haul half of it and then pay, she'd pay then the other half.
Yeah.
Is what I recall, but we'd have to look at the budget and see, you know, what's left in there if we want to use it up before July 1.
Oh, good point, yeah.
Right, because that way, that would...
Pay some early out of this year's budget.
That would give us more incentive to haul it ahead of, you know, before then.
Right.
So, other than that, oh, um, last fall, we talked about the highway helping the cemetery fix their road.
Yeah.
Is that still a green light? Is that, is there any discussion we need to have about that?
You had offered to bring your tractor up and use some town material and...
Yeah, the town would haul it in and spread it the best they could with probably with a small truck. And I would grade it out with my tractor. That offer's still on the table.
My understanding.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, okay. And I'll just fit that in among other projects. You know, it's not the highest priority, but it's something that I want to get done.
Are you going to mention it just to Susan Stately, seeing she's the chair of the cemetery commission?
I can, I can reach out to her for sure. Yeah, I mean, she was totally all for it. I'll remember that, so I can just let her know what's going to happen.
Right.
And when it's going to happen.
So, it looks like we had, oh, this not, we're thinking it's sand, not sand. Yeah, it looks like we kind of spent our money on the sand. Um, maybe not. I can't, that's your budget FY '24. It was $25,000. Maybe we've only spent $11,000. Looking at Phase 12 of the budget tonight. Actual FY '23.
Sand, yep.
No, but we're in '24 now, so the budget for '24 was $25,000. Actual, 11 months of 24, actual, so yeah, we have kind of spent that. Looks like we spent $25,500 and we have $25 budgeted, so... So...
So, we have to wait until July, July 1?
Well, yeah, it's up to Brandy, I guess, depending on how much, if any funds she has available. She's still running low because of FEMA.
And then can I bring up the quarry road thing? Is this the right time? The letter went out.
The old cannon road?
In the old quarry, is it?
Do we do, Chris, we do have it, we do have it on here, but it is kind of a rough thing, so either way.
Yeah, okay. Pick and wait or, you know, simply just whether we're telling that vehicle, but we can talk about it later.
Right. The only other, one other thing that I had is just to mention that I'm about to start on the county road extension across Fort Park. So, that's where our energy will be going for a while.
It's a mess up there.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. What was it right to begin with, but now it's...
You have to get that big luger again?
Yes, we'd like to rent an excavator for that.
An excavator, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. We're, we've got a hydraulic study ordered for the culvert that is, that has caused this whole mess. But we can, we can fix it without replacing this culvert.
Oh.
We're going to replace the culvert, but I just mean I can get started on it before the culvert goes. Because the hydraulic study is just based on that culvert.
So, we do most of the work up, like uphill of that culvert or...
It's actually downhill.
Downhill. Downhill. So, if we get another big event and the hydraulic study wasn't completed, we could wash out all your new work?
Um, potentially, potentially.
No, I'm sorry. What did you say about the hydraulic study? It was done or not?
No, I'll, I'll post an inquiry about that because it seems like it should, it should have done it.
Right, right. I mean, essentially, the hydraulic study tells us what size culvert to put in there. And FEMA requires hydraulic study, so that's why we're doing it. And also, the, the stream alterations requires that as well, so... But I think, I mean, there's a lot of material to move. That's why I'm sort of jumpy to get started on it, to get that filled in. I did, I did secure some material from our neighboring town, Dallas, and I've got it stockpiled, so it'll be easy to move it over there when we're ready. I didn't get as much as I wanted because I wanted the whole pile, but they had to move it quick and we had other trucks there moving it, so... But we did get a bunch of it. Will save us a bunch of time and their money as well. So, I guess that's all I've got, unless there's questions.
Well said, I think so.
Those are pretty good shade right now. These cars, you know, it's drying out nice and we've been grading every chance we get rating and chloriding, so...
Thanks.
Okay.
The recovery officer's report.
All right. As we talked about earlier, the speed radar sign that was damaged now installed. So, that added $5,500 to the project's total, which now stands at $330,000, $330,200. So, at 97.8% federal and state reimbursement, the total due back to Woodbury is $322,935 and 2 cents. So, hydraulic study, since we were also talking about, about hydraulic studies, those are completed for Town Highways 23 and 24 and the bridge repairs. So, I sent you guys an email on May 7 with those hydraulic studies attached. And noted in one of my sentences, I believe these studies ought to be used as the basis for RFPs. Because if you read them, I don't know if you read them. There's, you know, this is definitely out of my scope. But it does give replacement recommendations. And there's about seven or eight paragraphs here indicating that in this case for Town Highway 24, their replacement recommendations include a concrete box with an inside opening span of 16 feet and a minimum height of 7 feet. Then it goes on and on and on about where it should place, that it should be placed and how high it should be placed and what kind of fill should be used. So, this is a very comprehensive study. So, you know, this placed in the scope of work of an RFP would be great. It would do, you know, whomever would be responding to the RFP, a comprehensive review of what we're requesting. And also, FEMA is going to take a look at this. I sent it to FEMA as well because these are mitigation projects. So, they will pay the money for the mitigation projects for they want to be certain that, number one, this hydraulic study has been completed. And that we adhere to the, in this case, what I'm calling the scope of work of the recommendation in the hydraulic study.
So, you were, you, does the hydraulic study give an assortment of recommendations or is it just one?
This gives one recommendation for each, for each road. And so, and that's okay. You know, FEMA is going to pay for it. You know, I think one recommendation would be enough. And the gentleman who completed this key, Friedland Hydraulics Technician, put a lot of work effort into this. So, you know, I would say that this is what should go into the RFP.
And have you, have you looked at those, Alton?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I have a question about that. Isn't Nate's C Card doing the design work for that?
He is. So, he has those, he received those.
Did he?
He did, yeah.
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 Yeah, Michael, you sent them.
Yeah, I sent them on, yeah, to everybody, yeah. So, he'll...
And that'll make his work easier.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. And that's what he was, that's what he was waiting for in order to start his work. He needed those. Yeah, and essentially there, the hydraulic study gives you the size of the opening required. So, you can use different material, whether it's a concrete or aluminum or whatever, as long as the size of the flow is, is what's recommended in there.
But the recommendation, this is more than just a hydrological study. It's hydrological study and a recommendation for installation, so...
Yeah, yeah. No, it's very, it's very beneficial for us to have that. And it should help with Nate also. It should help Nate with his work.
Are they both concrete box culverts?
I think one was...
One's a concrete box. Second one. One's a concrete box.
I thought they both were. I was pretty sure.
They recommend them both bridges, uh, both box culverts.
Oh, are those recast?
They are recast.
16 feet foot span.
Yeah, and they come in short sections, you know, depending on how wide they are. They come in five foot, five or six foot sections, not so heavy. Because they got to come in on a truck and then we set them with a crane. Once we get to ground, cranes, cranes come and set it in place and they walk together.
I think they're down here.
Exactly.
Yeah, I was watching some of that. It was interesting.
Same as what they did down here to those, yeah, so... Michael, have we heard back from Nate in response to the...
No.
No, it hasn't.
Well, he just said he was eager.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, he did.
I think he should have sent it on to him, yeah.
Yeah.
Is he a sole source contractor for the town?
I'm sorry?
Is he a sole source contractor for the town?
For what?
For whatever he's doing.
He's doing, he's doing the engineering that we did in two separate contracts for $7,600 or so each.
So, he's working off an existing contract?
Yeah, that's the one we signed. He said FEMA was not happy that there was not a beginning and ending date.
Right. And then his, his report will be part of an RFP, I think?
I think part of his contract is to do the RFP.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I would, he, he would also put it out the bid and...
Right.
That's what I would, he, he would also put it out to bid and the whole, the whole thing.
Yeah.
Site visit and all that, you know.
That's great.
Yeah.
And other permits, I think that's another part of what he does is.
Mm-hmm.
So again, before, well, as the RFP goes out, I'd like to see it.
Mm-hmm.
So I can look at the terms and conditions in it.
Mm-hmm.
Because FEMA has, you know, rules and regulations that they require you to follow, if you want to get reimbursed. So. I can send it to you, I won't bore you with all this.
You, you could send that to Nate.
Yeah.
I'm sure he's probably aware of it, but you could send that to him so that as he's working it up, he's aware of what FEMA's gonna want.
Okay. Do you have, I don't have this.
Oh, yeah, send it to you.
Yeah, 'cause there's some definite stipulations in here. You know, I don't know if he can get on to the sam.gov website.
I don't know that.
Yeah. So you have to do that to check on debarr or suspended contractors. You know, they may be okay in Vermont, but they can't do any federal government work, stuff like that. So anyhow, yeah, I'd love to, like to work with them in that project. And probably with Brandy too, to make sure that the insurances are, are enough adequate to protect the town. All right, do you know when he's going to get to that RFP? 'Cause I'm sure the mitigation.
Well, he has to do the work. I mean, he has to do the design work first.
Right.
Before he does an RFP.
Right. So do you know when he's going to get to do?
He said he would be doing the work, um, I think he said latter part of the summer.
Yeah, midsummer.
Have it done for fall, possibly a late fall contracting.
Okay.
I think we'll probably need an extension for the project.
There'll, there'll be an extension to this year.
Okay.
And FEMA's aware of that. I've already teed that up, so they're aware that it's gonna be probably another eighteen months before we can get that fixed.
Yeah, those dark winters, they put everything behind.
I wonder if one of us should touch base with Nate now that we've got the hydraulic study to him, and just see if we can't speed that up a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
You know, maybe if, you know, seeing's, seeing's a hydraulic study, he knows what size to go now, maybe. And, and if we use that, that, uh, recommendation, it should be pretty straightforward.
Design work, I think.
Yeah, right, right, should be pretty straightforward, and maybe he can.
Yeah.
Easier fit it in for us.
Mm-hmm.
But if we don't mention it, and we just go along with his first, uh, estimate of time, then I think that's what it's gonna be. But I think maybe a, a call to push him along might be, might be useful.
I think that's a good idea.
I can do that.
Thanks, Sam.
Okay. So I'll check on the FEMA grants portal, and that's where all our information resides, all our projects. So there are, again, there are no obligated projects, which means there's no money being sent to the Department of Public Safety on our behalf. And so there's no sub grant agreement in place yet. One project, Old Quarry Road, is still pending the Consolidated Resource Center review. That hasn't changed since, since I gave my last report two weeks ago. And I don't know what's holding them up, because no questions from them have appeared in my email. So I don't know what the holdup is. And again, a CRC will look at the project for costs, including material, equipment, and labor, to make sure that what we've done, and that we're not overcharging, or being overcharged for equipment or material. And one, another project, which is the North and South Parks, that changed from, uh, pending initial project development to pending insurance peer review. And I have no idea about that.
Hmm.
So that thing is, North and South Parks, that project is forty-eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So I talked with a guy today who was in, uh, the mitigation team, we were talking about the, uh, the bridges. And he said, he asked, he said, "So are you planning on mitigating the fence in South Park?" You know, mitigating, you know, to prevent damages to the fence in South Park? And I said, "What? It's the first I've heard of it." So he said, "Yeah, that was damaged, and we're wondering if that's gonna be a mitigation project." So here's a fence that they're hung up on, you know, two, six-foot sections of split rail fence, and they're asking if we wanna mitigate that.
Well, the VTR has put two sections up, sort of like in the middle of the park. It looks kinda dumb, yeah. But they're, they didn't ask about whether we wanna replace those five hundred dollar maple trees, or? I don't think we do, but.
No.
So, so the answer should be no. We're not, we're not mitigating that.
So I asked him, "How you, how would we mitigate that?" He said, "Build a stone wall around it." And I said, "No." "We're not gonna mitigate that." And, you know, these are the kinds of questions that come to me every once in a while.
The, uh, it looks like the grass is gonna grow.
It's always greener on the other side.
Under all that mulch and seed mixture, whatever it is that they put down. 'Cause we do have money in for, you know, more topsoil and seed if we need it. That was part of that estimate we got from Richardson, right? But I don't think we're gonna need it.
Yeah. But that was just a proposal, it wasn't a contract.
Right, right. It was a proposal for, you know, estimate of what we might need. If we don't need it, we don't need it.
That's correct. So the remaining twelve projects are still designated as pending initial project development. And the program delivery manager is away on vacation still. And his replacement talked to me today, and he said they remain behind on all their projects. So. Anyhow.
I just can't imagine, I mean, as detailed and crazy as this is for this little town, I can't imagine what some of the bigger places are going through.
And, you know, they changed the rules. You can recall about a month ago, they said that what they're going to do is do, I forget the, uh, the term, "They're gonna take us at our word, that all these projects cost what they cost, and then send the money to us."
Really?
Yeah. It's called, uh, I have it here somewhere. And so instead of going through all this review process, and, you know, this is just so slow.
Yeah, but you've been keeping all those invoices and everything?
They have them.
Oh, they have them already, but they're just.
Up on this grants portal, they have everything. And so it's going to be a short, I forgot what the term is, forgive me. So supposedly they're gonna send us all the money, and then if they have questions, they'll come and ask us, like paying taxes, you know? You know, the federal government says, "Okay, you did this, you did this." And when you get audited, you have to prove it.
Hmm.
So it's similar. And, uh, hopefully they'll send us three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, and then, you know, they will ask for forgiveness if they find anything wrong, but I don't think they will.
Well, that makes it easier for them.
I think we've got pretty good records of all, all of this, of the invoices and.
Oh, we sure do.
And cards and. I think we'll be safe there.
Yeah, we are.
Be honest, if we could come, if we could get that money before we set the tax rate.
Well, that's what I'm hoping, and I, I.
That would be amazing.
Yeah. 'Cause the tax rate gets set around, around.
August?
August, yeah.
Like that.
Yeah, maybe several bit at least.
Let me see what I can do on that. And so. The rest is just, I continue to respond to FEMA, the program delivery managers, the mitigation team, and, uh, Department of Public Safety, and, you know, emails come across my desk a couple of times a day, so. You know, it's not as busy, we're not as busy as we were initially last fall, but this is more like babysitting these folks. Takes some time.
Is that, um, email that came in about, um, the one that's sitting there right under your blue paper? That, no, I'm sorry, more George Michael, the one. That one? Yeah.
This one?
Yeah.
First I hear of that.
Okay, alright.
Robin.
This is grand.
Okay. Look at that tomorrow.
So, here's the email with the term, simplified procedures. And this is from Vermont Emergency Management. Simplified procedures allows applicants to certify their own damages and work based on summaries using the attached small permanent work project certifications and acknowledgements form. God. Applicants do not need to gather comprehensive documentation before FEMA program delivery manager submits small project to FEMA's Consolidated Resource Center.
Oh.
So if they had told us that last fall, we would've been really happy. But in essence, you know, we don't have to produce that now, since it's already produced.
Wow. It's almost like, uh, this year I e-file my taxes for the first time, and it was like magic. They didn't look at it, they just sent me the check. It was weird. Although they might still, they, they still might look at it.
Thank you, Skip.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, next agenda item is the town hall roof. And approve the issuance of a RFP, and who will help with preparing it?
So. At the beginning of the whole ARPA thing, we had a little group that got together and had some meetings and hired some contractors and did, did a study of, um, how we could make the town hall into a more usable space, because at that time we were looking for places where we could have meetings and still be six feet apart.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, Michael had ordered all the, uh, Zoom equipment and all that stuff, and we had the, uh, uh, internet and phone line put in, and, and then it all sort of came to a halt, and, um, the board did not approve the money to work on the town hall. So I'm still hoping to get that done in little bits and pieces, because it is a, I think it's the oldest town hall in continuous use as a town hall in the state. And, um. We did get a, when I was preparing this report for the FEMA committee, um, I mean the request, I did get one estimate for the roof, and that was twelve thousand, six hundred dollars. It, you know, probably a little bit, but it wasn't a bit, it was just an estimate that I could use when putting together the proposal. So now I would like to have this board agree that that north side of that roof should be replaced. You might wanna look at it. You've probably already looked at it. It's very rusty.
I found them to be.
It's very rusty.
It's a better room.
Yeah. I mean, the south side looks fine, but the north side is very rusty, so. I'm not a professional, but to me that doesn't look good.
Is it leaking, or is it leaking?
I don't think it's leaking yet. We don't have, have any indication that there's water damage. We did have, we did pay to have the bats eliminated. And the, the person who did the bat elimination did some repairs on the, uh, on the soffit, so they wouldn't get back in, but they didn't do a permanent repair, so that's also gonna have to be done. So I don't know whether the bats came, got back in or not. I think they put some kind of screening or something.
Okay.
Well, would it be okay to put this on, um, in the next?
Sure.
Two weeks in just, and in the meantime, I can get over there and take a peek?
Yeah. If you wanna go up, you have to.
I'll give you.
Absolutely, I would wanna look too, 'cause I probably looked at one point.
Anytime you wanna go in, I've got a key. If you need to bring a ladder, if you need to bring a ladder, it's 'cause there's a hole in us, you know? I mean, hole in the ceiling.
Okay, 'cause a hole in the roof is a whole nother, that's, that's no problem. If that's the case.
We hope not, although when, when the guy, um, who did the historical evaluation went up there, he did, he did look, you know, at everything, and, um.
And my memory of that is that, um, it did appear that the south side of the roof had been redone, but the north wasn't at some point in the past, but nobody.
I thought that was screwed up, I'm not all pretty sure.
Um, all right, moving on.
Okay, so next week.
That's okay. Appointments, um, we have, uh, a gentleman, Kevin Spalding, to represent Swenson on the rail trail committee.
Yeah.
Do we have to make a motion for that, or that's just information?
No, that, no, we should make a motion.
Yeah.
I told, I mean, it's, the, uh, grant company as the landowner has the right to one seat on the committee.
Mm-hmm.
So I emailed Kevin Spalding, and he said, "I'll do it," so.
Great.
So I've moved that we appoint him to the rail trail committee.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
And I have two, two possible, um, people who are possibly interested in being the, uh, representative of the non-motorized users.
Okay.
So I'm waiting for one of them to stick their hand up and say they're interested.
And, uh, then you have a note here, Diana, that the town should consider appointing alternate member of the zoning board of adjustments, in case any members have to be recused for potential conflicts.
Yeah.
So you're looking for just, uh, somebody to sell in?
Yeah, I, there's, we've finally got a full five-member board, and that's great, but there's, because of this town and how small it is, there's always a potential for conflicts. And before you know it, you can have two people with conflicts, and then you have three members who have to agree, or, or they don't get a decision, and the person gets what they want by default, and that's not a very good way to operate. So anyways, I, I made two phone calls to someone who was a former chair of the board, she didn't call me back, so I guess that's a no, but if we think of anyone else.
But to be clear, you mean conflict of interest, right?
Yes, right, conflict of interest, right, yeah. Yeah.
And this would be someone who doesn't go to the regular meetings, but just gets called in when there's a need.
Right, I mean, there's only two or three meetings a year for that board, so. Uh, it's, you know, but whether or not the person has to show up at every meeting, and then maybe not have to decide, you know, that might happen too. You never know if somebody's gonna be challenged for a conflict until we get to the hearing.
And in the event? Yeah, okay. So we just need to come up with somebody?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's on our list of other available positions.
Right, and other available positions, just, uh, it doesn't sound like we have any, um, representatives, but we're still looking for rail trail members. Oh, you might have somebody for that.
Mm-hmm.
A health officer, which you are currently serving in that role as chair of the board. Um, animal control officer, Kim Silk is not, didn't you appoint him?
No, we appointed him to be the townkeeper.
Okay.
So if there is an animal control officer, and they need a place to keep a dog, he has kennels where he's gonna take them.
Representative of the solid waste district, a representative to, um, CBRPC, which stands for?
Center of Mountain Regional Planning Commission.
Yeah, thank you.
Transportation Advisory Committee.
And then a town energy coordinator.
You also have, um, solid waste.
Yeah, I think we just said that, didn't we?
Uh, yep.
Oh, yeah, solid waste district, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
And so in all of those, these other representatives, if, if we don't have a, someone representing the town, we just miss out on information, and we miss out on, um.
Hmm. Michael, you were on, you did that, uh, you did the, uh, transportation advisory committee for a while. Did you feel like that was worth it for the town?
I've never done that.
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry.
No, I've never done that.
That's right, Chris was doing that.
I know, basically that committee, um, reviews, uh, projects within the region. And they're an advisory committee to, um, the Department of Transportation.
So it is, you know, it's interesting, although now I think they're mostly still doing it by Zoom, but it was on the solid waste district one time, a long ago. And it's very, it's just interesting to me with people from other towns. Rather than their same old, same old.
Yeah. If nobody steps forward for the TAC committee, then I'll, I will do that. But I'm still waiting for someone.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
All right, move on, updates and other business. All right, move on. Updates and other business. We can just do that, approve bill and payroll orders at the end, so we still have to watch this, leave through this. Want to go back to that report on the attempt to eliminate parking in the right of way, road right of way, which those letters went out and?
Side letters, side letters went out. I know that we had communication because of the letters with two of the people who received them. And it sounds like there was some positive, you know, there'll be some positive movements with that hopefully. The one person that we were really trying to get a letter to, I don't, we don't know that she got her, or have we gotten?
We get the green card back. She signed it.
Oh, so she did get it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. When, like recently?
Um, I will have to look down in the office. I didn't even get that current.
Since last, since last meeting anyways, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay.
Yeah.
So, and can you remind me this, like in that letter, it was pretty clear that vehicles that are in the right of way or parked in the right of way will be towed in the event that?
Uh, I don't think that was specifically stated.
Okay.
I don't have the letter with me. I wish I did, but it was, basically it said, you know, it told people.
I remember it was very well written and very encouraging.
It was encouraging. It wasn't maybe super threatening.
Fair enough.
So I don't, I don't believe that that was specifically stated.
Okay.
Because we can't, basically, you know, the.
Wow.
One situation where, where the, as one, one owner complains that the other owner sometimes parks too, too close to the road so she can't get her driveway, but, but this is not like leaving the car there. It's like parking for an hour or so. By the time you called somebody to tow it away.
Specifically, I'm talking about the, the vehicle that is parked in the road.
Oh, yeah, that's a different.
And how we deal with that, what happens next.
Cause I'd like, maybe like reaching out just to be like, can we tow it? And we know we can reach her by mail at least.
But you went to, you went there and she wasn't willing to talk to you?
Uh, Chris and I tried to hand deliver a letter and have a conversation and.
I actually tried also.
You did?
I would just happen to be driving by and see a vehicle there.
Yeah.
Which I know she drives, so I just stopped and knocked on the door and.
Same thing.
Totally ignored, yeah.
We actually were, we were spotted. The property owner was outside and then stopped and went inside.
So maybe it makes sense to send a letter again?
Yeah.
And saying that, and I think it'll just have to be at the town's expense to tow it at this point.
But didn't we say we can get money for it, right? If we tow it to the scrubber, they can?
Right. You can get something, but it's not going to be much.
Okay. Would it cover the cost of towing at least? So it's a wash?
And I think it has to stay there for a certain amount of time.
Oh, right. You can't just scrap it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think that she's, she's got the right to get it out of a.
Yeah.
Out of impound, actually.
Yeah.
Wait.
But if we. Be ready to crash that thing.
During that time, we could just store it at the garage somewhere. I know, that's not great, but I mean, rather than paying an impound fee and adding up the costs.
What do we take? I think it was like 90 bucks to tow that thing, right? Or something like that?
Well, that was, that number came from Gates was, was willing to come get it for $90.
Okay.
And then they would just take it and they'd do whatever with the, with the value of the steal.
So if she, she, she let us know that that was good for her, good with her, then we could just do that.
Yeah.
But we don't want to.
We shouldn't do that without her.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think we have to apply some pressure. This has been going on for over a year.
Yeah. But I think we're going to end up having to just tow it and paying the impound fee.
Or pay the towing fee or?
Yeah. And, and again, it's not, it's not going to break the town. $90 or an hour with our bucket loader is not going to break the town in this thing.
That seems that maybe if she doesn't agree to that too, that seems, like that could cause problems as well.
You'd make for the town to do that.
Yeah, if the town went in with just a bucket loader and, and moved it, that might be problematic rather than hiring a towing service to impound.
Well, if you, if you go through the motions, legal motions, you've warned her.
Yeah.
You've gone through all the paperwork. The town has the right to remove that car, whether it's, whether it's with the town equipment or they hire a wrecker.
Mm-hmm.
Whether the town can, will have to front that money or what. I just feel like this has gone on long enough. It's time for this car to be moved.
Yeah.
But one of the problems was that supposedly the letter that Chris sent, we never could get confirmation.
Documentation of it. And the one that I sent does not specifically give a warning or like a date. So I don't know if that is going to be, but I mean, it's in the road. Like, do we even need permission to have a car pulled out in the middle of the town road? I feel like we don't need to warn someone. Like it's in.
Well, then we'd have to, you know, store it and see if they want it back. It would be preferential to just have somebody take it to Gates and not have to deal with it.
But that's going to be.
So that would require permission to do that though.
Right, right. Yeah. So.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, if you leave a car down in Mont Pleyer on Main Street during a snowstorm, it's getting towed. It's out of the way.
To the impound.
Whether you give them permission or not, it's in your right of way. You have to, you have to maintain your road. It's out of there. It's gone.
But that's usually done by like a bobs or something like that, right?
Sure. Well, that's fine. That's, that's totally fine with me too. In fact, I would rather have.
I agree. I think that's the better move.
To pay a, a, a service to, to get it out of there.
Yeah.
Then we're not taking on liability. We're not, you know what I mean?
Uh-huh.
But, but then, you know, in Mont Pleyer, they have an ordinance problem. They have policies in place that protects them from whatever liability that an individual can bring to you. And I think that's what we've got to do here. We have to have some sort of a policy. If your car is here for X amount of time, it's in our way. It's got to go. And if they want their car, they have to pay the, the towing as well as the, the impound fees.
Here's another idea. We write a, a, a letter in big, like make a sign saying, the town is going to tow this unless you let us know by such and such a date that you don't want to get rid of the car. And if you're okay with it, sign here. Something like that. Bright color.
I think, I, I think I have a problem with this. I'd be inclined just to send a letter saying tow the car to be towed.
An registered letter to this particular.
And we get it back, once we get it back, then we say, we just hire somebody to tow it and be done with this.
Uh, want me to draft a letter and I'll make it a, I'll make it a very clear letter?
Yeah.
A little more teeth.
Yes.
And it's, you know, parking in the road is, is going to be against the law. We shouldn't have a, you have to have a policy.
You could check with Vtrans or VLCT. I think there is state statute. I remember Shawna Clifford sending me something and I might still have it on my computer if I can find it with a similar issue back when I was a solid work member. There are, yeah, there are different state laws about leaving your car in the middle of a public highway.
If that were the case and we could find that out, we could just tow it and not bother with another letter, right?
If there's statute saying that you have the right to move it, it's clear that it's been there in our way for.
A long, long time.
How do we find that, Michael? How do we find that?
Well, I, I think you could contact our district. Chris Seer is the person that we're supposed to contact now for District Six. And he could probably answer that question or find someone that could. Or VLCT may have, you know, knowledge of the statute and could advise you on, about that also.
Or we can Google it.
Or you could Google it, yeah, if you want to read the street statute.
All right.
I'll try to find the thing that Shawna Clifford sent me, but I can't guarantee that. That was a few years ago, so.
I will draft a letter, but if we can get confirmation that we have the right to tow it, I feel like we should just do it. But I'll draft the letter just so that that's like happening.
So there was, I went to visit George Sawyer.
Yeah, okay.
And he said that he was, he wanted to apologize for Alfie for, for being a pain.
For him?
George Sawyer wanted to apologize to you for, you know, the fact that they keep parking in the road on Maple Lane.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Anyway, see, he's got actually four people working for him, which I was surprised. That two of them at least are, are living down the road in the property that he bought from Dan St. John. And so they're parking down there, but the other, the barn that goes with the St. John property, he was putting some more gravel in there to create more parking. So still, when he has classes three times a year, he's still going to have a problem. But he's going to go down to a neighbor across the road who has some land that they had for a log landing and see whether they can use that. So he acknowledged that he was going to take care of that.
Okay.
Thank you. I got the easy one.
Next repentin is the rules of procedure, which looks like we got a, no, this is a town hall.
I gave you that last time or the time before.
You did.
I haven't done mine.
I haven't done mine.
All right. Okay.
I will.
All right. We'll put it on the next one. Next agenda, two weeks.
By the time we figure out how to do things here, we will need rules of procedure.
And then response to Eric Johnson.
Well, it was reported to me by someone who wasn't here, but watched the HCTV and said that the board did tell Eric that we would get back, that we would address his concern. Do you think? I mean, I don't even know, I don't think we even have an email address, I mean, a mailing address for him, but do you think, anybody think that we should do that?
I offered to him at the parking lot that if he reached out to me with his questions, I would respond. He has not reached out. I feel like that's good enough considering that.
What I was, yeah.
Didn't, didn't he mention that he was having emails back and forth with Randy?
I think he is. I think Randy does have an email address for him, but I don't have it and he.
We still have the mailing address that the tax bill goes to.
Oh, really?
Do we want to?
Well, I'm not sure what our response would be other than.
Yeah, I was just going to put, put together something that, you know, directing him to the various statutes that tell the town that if people don't pay their property taxes, the town can sell their property.
I feel like it would be opening up a can of worms.
Well, he, yeah, but he knows that. But I just, if he's, if we said we would respond to him, then we can either respond or not.
Right.
I don't remember saying that, but it was kind of an intense period right there.
Yeah. Well, I feel like because I specifically said to him like face to face, you can email me your concerns and I will respond. I feel like that's kind of enough and he hasn't emailed me anything. So I mean, I don't know.
Okay.
It's hard to figure out what the exact question that we would be responding to.
Right. Well, it's, yeah. It seemed, it seemed to be, although it got a little confusing along the way, but he was complaining that some town official was not responding to his request for a meeting and he wanted, he thought that we were, you know, somehow empowered to tell that other town official what she could do. We're not. But, yeah, so anyways, okay, let's forget that.
And then we have the complaints about the new parking project, which is on County Road near Greenwood Lake, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I know that you, that you shared some email concerns.
There was a bunch of emails.
Residents.
Were sent to the Lake Association who didn't pass them along to the, you know, to the proper people who would know that, know what to do about it or take those concerns seriously. And as you recall, the lady from Newt was here that night that Eric got everything put off track. So we never got to ask her any questions, but it, it did seem at the time that she had done due diligence and she'd had several of state scientist types look at the property and had, I think they had the conservation commission as.
The conservation, are you talking about the letter that she sent to the landowners? Yeah, the conservation commission and the planning commission chairs signed that letter.
Yeah, okay. So anyways, hopefully it'll, I mean, I just hope it's done. And now the person who's complaining.
The Greenwood Lake Association via Skip Marcasani did respond to her in that letter. And then there was one landowner that clo, camp closest to, you know, the, and the guardrails that also responded. I had a number of conversations with him.
Oh.
And everything was resolved with him. So.
Well, the one who's complaining that I just got, I mean, this letter he wrote like in March and I just got it like Friday, wound his way around to, yay. All kinds of complaints like are, are we going to make, are we going to police it, you know, make sure that people aren't parking there to go over and steal things from his camp and, you know, I don't know. We can't police much of anything around here.
It's private property.
Exactly, yeah.
And the property owner paid to get, to put it in there.
Right.
So it really has minimal effect on the town.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Or the town has minimal responsibility.
At least the curb cut that we approved.
Right.
That's right.
Right, yeah. So.
And he stole, let's see, a mail that I saw, which you guys may or may not have seen, that person who was concerned about all that stuff is in direct contact with Sophie anyway. And that's who he should be addressing all this to, in my opinion. So.
Well, they were complaining, complaining that town should have been having meetings and, you know.
Well, he should have.
We thought it was kind of a no brainer.
When he got the letter, like.
Yeah, I know.
He brought it up before, you know, if he had, if he really was concerned with it.
Mm-hmm. Kind of like, anyways, okay, so.
And then it looks like there's a suggestion that we reschedule our next meeting from the 27th to the 28th. It's time maybe.
27th is Memorial Day.
I second that.
But yeah, it's the 28th, like Tuesday. Memorial Day is obviously a Monday then.
Yeah.
So it's going to be 28th works.
Let's do that.
Correct. And then the last.
What is Memorial Day though?
Norm, thank you for coming. You're on the agenda next, but I don't think it requires an executive session, so we can.
We did discuss this earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I can run through some of the stuff and then you'll decide whether you want an executive session or not.
Okay.
Just to bring everyone up to date. Yeah, so obviously we put out an RFP for the global hazard mitigation plan. And we got total of four responses, three of which met the criteria for, for submission. And Michael, of course, recused himself from further work on this until this is done. And I can point this whole thing back to Michael again, which will be fine by me. But the, so the committee met and the, the three people that proposed were, let's see, there was, well, CBRPC submitted a proposal, Paul Luciano from OPH Consulting Services did.
What's it called again?
OPH.
OPH.
Consulting Services. And Stephanie Magden from STEAM Solutions. Now, OPH or Paul Luciano's price was $9,256 and the projected time to do the project was six months. CBRPC's price was $9,434 and planned to do it in eight months. And SEAM's price was $9,400 and the time, nine months. So we, the committee went ahead and took a look at their, their submission, of course, as well as a sample of their work. Each of them submitted a sample of completed plan that they've done. And we checked references and our recommendation. And we checked references and our recommendation was, is that to go with OPH. Because, well, they have the, the key, key thing there is the quickest time turnaround for it because the town is exposed by not having a plan in place, which the previous plan expired. And also it has the lowest price and also excellent references. So that's a summation of where we stand with it and the question is what, what's the pleasure?
Who else was on this committee?
It's me and it's.
John, John Gordon.
Yeah, John Gordon and Jim Schwartz.
Oh. Well, Michael's, after you get done with the bidding, he can still work, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's the whole plan.
Yeah, okay. I thought you said that because he was gonna be recused forever.
No, it was just part of the evaluation process, because it's conflict with the crystal.
With my role with CVRPC.
I move that we accept the committee's recommendation to approve the bid from OPO for ninety.
OPH, yeah.
OPH for ninety-two fifty-six. Discussion. All those in here? Thanks for doing all the legwork.
Yeah. You know, there were, you know, three good proposals, so it did take some work to evaluate it and, you know, and go through that process and two-point values, et cetera, et cetera, and trying to see who would be best in the best interest of the town, for the prices were similar, so.
Did you get the copy of the purchasing policy from Robin today? So you were all good with that?
I'll memorize it, I'm sure.
Kind of behind, in, behind the times, but you did happen to do it all right. Over eighty thousand dollars, you have to go out for a public bid and you did that.
Yeah, it was publicly advertised, Michaelson, that, yeah, that went out and the RFPs went out. And as you know, there was a snafu with one, one proposer that did not get, get in on time. And so it sort of didn't play out to be able to deal with that, an individual didn't. And we conversed and tried to see if there was a way to.
Did you ever find out what it was that they did wrong?
No, I asked for a copy of the letter, yeah, to see just how come they got returned.
They didn't really care.
Whatnot, no big issue for them, I'm sure. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think we still have to approve bills and payroll orders.
Well, there are some people here and they, they didn't show up in time for the public comment, but they're sitting quietly and I don't know if we should let them talk or not.
Of course. That's a forceful. Steve, Maverick, anything you wanna?
I'm just here to.
You're just here to.
Keep touch.
Hold our public officials accountable and say thank you for your work. We're just, we're just here to.
But since you're here.
Maverick, it's nice to see you.
Good to see you.
So I wanted to mention it would be really nice if your work product had a little more, you know, a bigger piece of the webpage. Something to make people know that, I mean, it, it got put on the webpage, just did all that. And you did all that work, but then there was really not much of a hullabaloo about, "Look, here's this great thing that this nice girl did for us. How could we do that?"
Can you, can you say what the project is just so people know?
Yeah. It was a, it was a map, an interactive map of everything that's going on in Woodbury. Historic sites and recreational areas and.
I think there might be a feature with the Google Maps to have, I don't know if it'd be called it thumbnail, but to have like a picture of it on. Like we have a map already on the Woodbury webpage and it pops up with like a little version of it. So there might be a way to do that with my map. I'm not sure what tab you'd wanna put it under. You might be able to put it under the Maps tab. It'd be other one, but I'm not sure. I can play around with it. Let's see.
So, I don't know, it just seemed like it was a really nice thing that was done and then I hate to see it just sit there.
It has gotten a ton of views.
Oh, really?
It just, like, I didn't, I didn't expect that, but I checked it like before I went to college or right when it got posted. And it has like twenty-five hundred views right now, which is up like a thousand since I checked it a few months ago.
I mean, you could add a little summary or something that we could put on the, the Facebook page every once in a while and remind people to go look at it.
Yeah. Sounds like they're looking at it on their own, though.
Yeah, really.
So will you close the meeting after you approve the bills? Okay. So I'll leave that for a flight and then.
Don't you know what time that is? Thank you, everybody. Nice to meet you, Merv.
How are you liking UVM?
The payroll, she did a warrant for each payroll. Randy did up a warrant today that combines these three into one warrant.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if you guys wanna sign the one warrant or if you wanna sign each one of the warrants.
Probably sign the one, right?
No. So we're just gonna look at our bills and.
Makes sense to me.
Now, if you guys, if you guys wanna go through the warrants, what, I think we could do that all together.
Uh, either way, or I was gonna hand these over to you if you wanted to look and I'll look at some. However, you guys wanna do it.
Diana, I actually think it's good if we're doing a little, personally, if we're doing, if we're looking at different things. To me, that's a good thing.
Okay.
Do you want me to wait till it's sunny?
Drop them if you want. I'm gonna drop with the town clerk's office tomorrow.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good to see you guys.
Nice, baby.
I would be okay if each one of us like looked through our pile was good, we could.
Yeah, just plug in. I'm, I'm good with that.
You're up, you were right.
Sure where you went.
Like if I look through this pile and I put my signature, I've checked for the board and if you feel comfortable putting your signature on there.
Like I was telling Lizzie, I don't usually, I just should look to see what we're paying to who, not whether or not it's matching up on the warrant, but. That's the auditor job.
Were all of these chairs out or you got them off of there?
Yeah, there was a pile of them behind where Jerome is sitting.
Okay.
And there was a few over here. I'll put these over here, but they're not hung up. There's not enough room to hang them all up.
Okay.
Does Jerome?
Yes.
Could you put those chairs over behind where you're sitting?
I think, yeah, we can make, yeah, we can do that.
Man, that's gonna be.
Again, the contest bill.
There's sometimes.
I was gonna get in because that broadcast was on the last one.
Okay.
Yeah, go back up for it.
Yeah, yeah.
But it wasn't on the warrant.
Okay.
So it's just catching itself up. So when I get it down at the office, I will get them.
I see, all right. So in that case, we're good.
Okay.
Well, happy evening, everybody.
Thanks, you too.
Thanks, Robin.
Yeah.
This one is massive.
So I knew, I forgot to ask her, but I think she's, I think they did that floor for Lizzie.
Oh, I saw the truck there with the chute for the concrete. Yeah, so they must have.
And they were, one day, I think it was Thursday, they were gonna come in and do the seal coating.
Okay, okay.
So that means you can.
Oh, Mike could come and do his thing.
Doing the, did you find somebody to do the sheet rock and all the roofing and painting and everything?
Yeah, yep. So I don't know if he should reach out to Robin about coming and just as far as times at work and stuff. But yeah, I'll put that on my notes of things to do is let him know that the.
So who is it?
It's Michael Ferrier. He's gonna do the sheet rock and then Akima Olam's gonna do the paint, like sheet rock finishing, mud and tape painting. And then he'll come back and do the trim after, she does all that stuff.
So, yeah, I was thinking as far as the heating people go, when they're ready to come.
Oh, gotcha.
But maybe they could just use the bulkhead that has a separate key.
Yeah. Right, they probably wanna use the bulkhead. I'm sure they want to use the bulkhead.
Heating people probably would, yeah. Well, yes, sheet rock too, I guess. It'd be easier to bring in there.
Yeah.
There's some, last time I was in there, there's some plywood piled up and stuff that needs to be moved, so that.
In the basement?
In the, in the bulkhead.
Oh, okay.
Maybe it's gone by now.
There it is. Yeah, this one's good. I can go through that if you want, Diana. I did go through that.
Oh, but so you're thinking that only one, were you saying that only one of us should go through it?
Well, I'm comfortable, if you guys go through it, I'm comfortable signing. Based on. All right, sign that one. That's not me, right?
That's me.
That's you.
It's kind of a segue. I only got one.
But so, so interesting though to see how much it costs to get a shoe rack of mushroom soup.
We'd like to know that.
So they have these two if you're good with it. Me and Chris just signed the little. So this one is the payroll ones. There's three payroll deals. And they created one sheet and I just signed all of them because I was like, it's just easier to sign everything. We could have just signed that one, but. Uh, what do we do? We shrink the tables. Oh, we didn't enter yet.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, Jerome, you're just sitting there waiting for us.
You motion to adjourn?
Uh, do we have to wait for Diana to sign everything?
You want to adjourn?
Oh, sure, yeah.
All of us in favor?
I.